America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, maybe seated. Next item is going to be approving the minutes of the board meeting, December 5th.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes as written.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries, minutes are recorded. Next item on the agenda, lifting vacate order on 203 West Main Street. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is to lift the vacate order that the town established in December of 2020, November of 2020. And that is because the building next door is being stabilized and the threat of loss it has passed.
All right, so we have a consideration to take action on the vacate order, so we can get a motion to remove the vacate order, is that correct?
Please.
Make a motion, we lift the vacate order on 203 West Main.
Second.
All in favor? All right, vacate order has been lifted. Next item on the agenda, police department salary adjustment. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is to provide a 1,000, this is the second half of the board, if I could take the board back a little bit. We had the 3% cost of living increase that was across the board for all employees in the general fund this year. And then we had an interim raise for employees in the general fund, I believe that was $2,000 per employee, Michelle, in September. And this is the second half of that, it's $1,000, but this is really only applicable to the police department, $1,000 per patrol officer, and a $3,000 increase for the chief. The chief did not receive the interim raise, so this would kind of adjust those salaries accordingly and maintain the salary increments between the chief, the lieutenant, the corporal, and then the patrol officers.
All right, so any questions from the board on the police department salary adjustment?
This is probably not the salary adjustment, are we still looking for another officer?
We are, I believe the chief is close to making an off, and a conditional offer to an officer, yes.
I know it's not this, but I just wanted to ask.
If there are no other questions from the board, then we can move on to the next item, which is-
Do you need a motion to approve?
Consider action, yeah, consider action on police department salary increase.
So I make a motion that we approve the increase as stated.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, resolution 2023-03 surplus property, the 2012 Dodge Durango.
No, this is a Dodge Charger, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, this pertains to a vehicle that actually blew its engine, so the cost of repairing the vehicle far outstrips what the value of the vehicle is, so we are, plus we have an existing tow bill to have the vehicle towed to a shop, so hence surplusing the vehicle.
Make a motion, we approve resolution 2023-03, declare that-
Thank you, is there a second?
... surplus.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to adopt the calendar for the 2023 board meeting, meetings.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the chamber updates. Ethan, I don't see Ethan out there. All right.
I think we have a new president of the chamber now.
Oh, yes, Michael.
Yep.
That's right.
Probably ought to remind him of me.
There he is.
Well, there's Ethan.
We're on the current agenda item of chamber updates, so please come right on in.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Commissioners, Mr. Manager, good to see everybody tonight, sorry for my tardiness. Happy New Year. The chamber will be meeting here in the next couple of weeks to organize our baseline of events and initiatives for the year, as well as introducing the new officers to everybody in town for the board this coming year. No major updates at this point, as it is just the first of the year and the board has not yet met, but to everyone, Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ethan. All right, the next item on the agenda is town attorney's report.
Nothing to report to the board tonight.
Yep. Next item on the agenda, police chief's report.
This month, we had five reported calls for service, 106 total calls for service, 17 traffic stops, and eight traffic accidents.
Is it eight? Is that normal?
Hmm, anywhere between seven and 10.
Yeah.
Bad weather?
No, just normal, 18 traffic.
I didn't know.
Where are you seeing most of those?
All over. Yeah, no rhyme or reason. Normally, the majority of them happen around the food lane parking lot area, either in that intersection, coming out of that intersection and turning against traffic, or either in the parking lots.
Gotcha.
I think we had one in South Side Pharmacy, other than that, the rest of them were on the road.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, next item on the agenda is the town manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the obvious topic of concern for most citizens has been the water pressure and the ongoing issues with leaks. We had that really bad leak last week, spent a day and a half without water. That was the confluence of two unfortunate events, one being multiple leaks on Ash Street, but the other is power interruption that knocked the wells out of service for a period of time and managed to drain the tanks. So we are working on that, we're actually actively working on possibly another leak tonight, and hopefully that will be resolved shortly, so. Public Works Director Bobby Ball is here, if you have any questions as a board of him. And on the topic of utilities, we are just merely awaiting the notice to proceed from the Department of Environmental Quality. Once we get that, we can move forward with the projects. Besides the other items on the manager's report, I had a couple of other issues that I wanted to raise with the board. Code enforcement, the code enforcement officer will actually be here at next month's meeting, so he will be able to answer any questions you may have. The other item is the Main Street program. We do have, I believe it's one free registration for the conference, and I don't know if any of the board members wanted to participate in the Main Street Conference, but we do have that one free registration, and we can also try, and if multiple people want to go, obviously find money in the budget to send people. That was the other item.
Do you got a flyer on that with dates or anything?
It's all electronic, but I can forward it to the board.
That'd be good.
Yeah. And I avoided doing that, I wasn't sure how many of y'all actually got the updates from Commerce, so, but I'll forward it to all the board. The other item that's not on the reports, on the manager's report, but we did contact animal control regarding these feral cats here in town, and I have not gotten any word back from animal control on that situation. There are some shelters that are local to Nash and Wilson County that we can possibly contact to assist us in the feral cat situation, that's another alternative we can explore. Any questions?
Have we had any luck with Dixon?
Have not heard anything since before Christmas.
Are they still in business?
That's an open question, Commissioner.
All right, so now open up to the board for any questions for the manager.
I just, I want to shoot something actually, not to Andrew, but to Bobby, and commend you guys for, and I know the night was a problem, we're still trying to acquire some equipment with lighting and some things like that, but I know there was a big reduction in the shutdown time as well, we had, with the last time we had big breaks. So, thank you very much for getting it back. In addition, I think we had some water supplies brought in through emergency services, Mayor Pritchard, I know you were involved in that, so thank you to the town and the county, I'm sure they'll see this on their, on their, on their stream, and to you-
Chairman Davis with the board commissioners.
And to you, Mayor Pritchard, for getting that done. And I know Commissioner Griffin and the Pat, last, the last time we had a break in range, you found some sources for water, and maybe we could bring that back up, if it's necessary, and I think you, I think you had found an additional source this time?
What's that?
With Baptist men on mission?
Oh, supply order, yeah, yeah, the Baptists, they can supply potable drinking water, a tanker of that, as well as a tanker of non-potable.
So I know they came forward when they saw some of the things that were going on, so.
I believe also Edwards had volunteered the use of their impotable water tanker as well, that they use for dust suppression, so that too would be a possibility going forward. Hopefully we'll minimize the, that's the important thing, is to minimize the service-wide-
Right.
-disruptions.
I want to say thank you to the Spring Fire Department for doing that.
I mean, that was above and beyond their call of duty, and so, I mean, we appreciate
that, also. I want to say that, thank you to the fire department.
All right, any updates on the signatures for when we can get the money to start fixing this stuff? I know Commissioner Jeffries is always, and we've talked about this, even for the 10, the 20-year plan back before I was elected, there was talks of the insertion valves and setting down zones.
I reached out to the states on several different people at the state level, over shutdown of what is their, I guess, Christmas break shutdown, or when nobody happens to be around, and I have yet to hear anything. I will continue to pursue that issue with them. Really, that's, the only thing that's missing is a notice to proceed. We have the engineer's contract sitting in my inbox, waiting for this board's approval, so the moment we get that notice to proceed, we can move forward. And I'm thinking that would require a signed grant agreement, so, still waiting to hear from the state.
I emailed Senator Barnes yesterday, see if she could come in and save the day and help speed this money up.
She dropped the mic at the town hall meeting and let us know we got it, so now let's, let's make sure we get it. The other thing, I think, I'm looking to see you recover this in the manager's notes, was the grant for the depot building? If you want to update everybody on that, maybe?
Yeah, it, NC Commerce has, has, I think graciously awarded us 800,000 of the 950 that we asked for, which is, I think, we will be able to stretch and have a very significant and impactful project with the railroad depot and the refurbishment. It'll be, it'll be a total rehab with an outfit, a commercial kitchen, and the ability to have events in that space. So it will be a traffic generator to downtown. I've gotten a lot of questions about the fate of the library, obviously I know this board, and the community wants the library to live on. At one point, on my visit to Spalding, there, you know, Spalding has a great administrative building and has an elementary school library that's housed in there, that could be part of the conversation. We have the community building, although that would require some upfitting of that structure, so the library can live on, it's just a matter of in what iteration, so. And that'll be part of the ongoing discussions.
I noticed there was some repairs to the community building just recently.
We haven't done anything recently, no.
All right, so I'd like to ask you all if what Mayor, retired Mayor, current Commissioner Guatney did last year, if you all think we should schedule some kind of a town hall where we can all meet for an open forum to talk about the water, or what, any questions?
Are you getting blitzed with a lot of questions from town hall that that could serve a good purpose, or?
Well, I have to say that Ashley Edwards, our customer service clerk, did a yeoman's job in answering people's questions. We didn't always have answers for people, as the process was evolving, but when we did get the answers, she sent out phone tree calls, auto dialer calls, she answered every question, she answered the phone, she never shirked from her duties there, so she did a great job. I know Michelle had, you know, did her best to get the word out. I updated the website as things changed, when they changed. We were always available, and, I mean, certainly if people feel the need to have a town forum or this board feels the need, I don't see any, any issues with that, but, you know, we do our best to answer people's questions with, to the best of our ability. We don't always have the answers, and we certainly don't always have the answers that people want to hear.
He asked you, I mean, I don't know how much of the new plan with the engineers, are you ready to discuss with the public, or even, you know?
Well, that would be, I think that would be better served if we had the engineers under contract, and they could help walk the public through the process, and then we could talk about what it will take to have, I'm certain that there will be times where people's water will be on a bypass system, where they'll have above-ground bypass pipes while they're working on water mains, so they can talk about that process, I think, better than what we can in theory right now.
I'd like, yeah, I'd like to say something about this process as it's getting ready to start. I want to say something about this process as it's getting ready to start. I'm not a speaker, so I may say it, and it may come out the wrong way, and I don't mean that. What I've got to say is not directed at anybody in this room, it's directed at an organization we're getting ready to deal with, and I want to say it, and I'm going to say it outside, so everybody hears it, the commissioners hear it, and Andrew hears it, and Bobby hears it. And I want to thank Bobby again for all he's done. We've given him a shit system, basically. It's a fragile system, and we've given it to him. But here's what burns me up, and I'm going to go back a little bit, if you'll bear with me. The only reason I ran is because three women blew my phone up, and when I started looking at our system, and I started looking at EnviroLink, I felt I could have. And from, and I'm not doing this now to pat myself on the back, but I'm doing this to make a point in a few minutes, is at that moment and at that time I decided to run, I had already brought up insertion valves. I did a drawing of the insertion valves, 13 of them, that would need to be put in to divide this town into five zones. And I was vehement about the importance of that. It didn't happen, but I'm going to say this too at the same time. Andrew got hired, which was the best thing we could have done. Andrew made the decision to get rid of EnviroLink, was the best thing we could have done. So we went down that road, Andrew did. He then had to set up a department, which he did, he had to set up equipment, which he did, and Bobby is now doing everything in his power to do it correctly. Where we are falling short right now is Wooten, and I'm going to say this, Wooten gave us the first runaround of what they want to do, its mains. That is the easiest frickin' way out, excuse my language. They got a kid sitting in the corner, on a computer, starting at the center of town, going each direction on each main, and doing it until he runs out of money, and they're going to send that to the town. That's it, I'm telling you, that's a fact. We had a two-year study done, two years. Mike Tolson gave everything he had for two years, put his stamp on this, which is factual, he did this, and I want to read some of the comments that were in it. And I'm reading these because they've not looked at it. They haven't looked at it. How they decided the mains is because, well, we need mains, we know that, anybody can guess that. But is that number one? No. No, it's not number one. We've talked about this. I want to read some things that was in his report. Frequent exercise of valves has led to frequent inexercise of valves and inability to achieve full isolation on water mains during flushing and repair activities. Replacement of several valves is necessary to provide isolation. Installation of additional valves to ensure the ability to isolate segments of a line will translate to fewer complaints and less requirements. During leaks and flushing events, isolation sections of the district system are critical, critical. A capital project to exercise and evaluate existing valves coupled with installation of insertion or cut-in valves would greatly enhance future maintenance and operation of the system. And I'm reading this because this firm that we hired, we're going to pay, I think, $300,000. During recent main breaks, it was discovered that town was unable to isolate specific sections of town due to lack of operational valves. This project would install insulation valves at key areas to zone in a way that would isolate sections. The project had received high priority, this project should receive high priority, is placed early in the schedule to be installed, implemented as soon as possible. We had this. Did Metro, did Wooten look at it? I won't say no. I don't think they have, because you look at what they've got on here, they've got eight insertion valves, and they've got them to do their main work, I'm telling you. You can't shut the whole town with eight valves down, it's going to take 13 or something like that, and I've got that. But what I'm getting at is here, we can't, we've talked in the past about, whoa, let's go ahead and get a crew come in here, maybe we ought to start exercising valves. Wrong. We can't shut the town down, we should, Bobby, how many valves did you turn the other night on Ash Street?
Five, total.
Five? Did it shut it down? No, okay. How many did we turn on Ash Street? You weren't here, Buddy probably knows, how many did we turn on Ash Street that big break? Who knows? Did they work? No.
A lot.
Our valves do not work, folks. We can't do a thing here. Even putting bypasses in, unless you use an insertion valve, you can't even put a bypass in without shutting the whole town down. We have to have this. We have to let Wooten know the direction that we need to go. Bobby Ball, if I'm not mistaken, his title is Director of Public Works. Close? Is that his title?
Yes.
Okay. He needs to be Director of Public Works. He needs to be driving the train. He should be the guy in front, it's his responsibility, it's his utilities. He should be able to make the decisions on what is important and what's not, he's in it, he's ended up to his knees right now, we're in, we're looking right now. He needs to be able to go to Wooten and sit down with him and say, this is what we got to do, help me out, design it, and let's do it. That's what needs to happen. He's got to be part of this train. Wooten is, Wooten has no skin in this, they have no skin, they got 300 jobs, we're just a dang number, folks. At least Mike Tolson has skin in it, two years of working and putting his stamp on it, and we just pushed him aside. We pushed him aside, that's wrong. That is wrong. We have to make better decisions. Wooten needs to know what we need, how we need it. I think Andrew's already started the conversation. I think he's started a conversation about tanks, he's started a conversation about, I think, insertile valves, I believe he has. So he's already done this, but we need to let them know that just throwing mains at us to do is no. Come on, folks, we got certain steps that we, we got to do, we got to be able to isolate the tanks. Zone five is what I have in here, the tank at the school, there's a well right there, right next to the tank. Four insertion valves would have shut that area down right now, and that tank would always be full. Zone two, Ash Street, a well and a tank right there, three insertion valves would shut that zone down, that tank would already be full. We have to do this, we have to do it now. If we can find enough money to do three insertion valves, we need to do three. Let's at least shut one part of town down, maybe we'll get lucky and that's where the break will be. Or we can shut that zone down and save the water in the tank. So when the, when we get the repair fixed that Bobby does, we ain't got to wait another day and a half or two days for the pressure to build back up. We got water in the tank. There's a lot of very smart, smart people in this town, and I don't want to beat on them, I don't want to beat on them, but I am going to beat on them. When we had a report, and nothing's in there, and it's just, this is just a, I'm sorry, and now, folks, this is all my opinion, it's my opinion, we all have it, but I've been down this road in the town of Alexandria where we broke as a company everything in the town, basically. So I've been here, I've rode this thing. We have to do it certain steps at a time, and then move forward, but that guy sitting right there has got to show us what he wants and what he needs, and let the engine fairing do the process and get it for him, not them sitting in some who-knows-office that don't know anything because they dang sure didn't read this, telling us what we need. I'm sorry. Well, I'm not, I'm not here to do that, I just want to help the town, that's all I want to do, I want to help this town, get their water straightened out, and get it going in the direction. We're there, we're almost there, but it's critical now, we do what's right, we got to do what's right, and we got to take these steps that are right, and they got to help that guy line it up. He's going to be a big part of it, don't get me wrong, I'm not, I'm not saying that, but Bobby's been in it, he's got his knees muddy, he knows the system, he needs to be telling it and guiding that and showing them what we need, not them in an office that don't know nothing because they didn't read nothing. And if they want to sit down here and debate with me that they did read this, oh, I'd love it. I'd love it. But anyway, thank you all, sorry.
Thank you for those comments.
Get off my high horse, I'm sorry, thank you. But hey, everybody in this room is doing everything they can, folks. We're gonna have breaks. We, our system is fragile, this guy's done everything he can, those lady, that lady's done everything, everybody on this board has done everything that we can. We have got to now be smart with what we do and how we do it. If he can find some money somewhere under his chair and under the seat of his truck to buy a valve or here or two, we need to go ahead and do it and put them in. Maybe we can put three in to save the tank at Ash and make sure that's full all the time. But we have to take some steps, and we have to do it in the correct order. And, and I'm not throwing you out on a limb by yourself, Bobby, and adding more to your plate because you've got enough, but your crew's good, you've been through a season already, they know what they're doing, but you, and I'm, I'll, if you want to hear me, you may not want to hear me, you may not want to listen to me, and you don't want to talk to me, I don't really care, but if you do, I'm willing to tell you and tell you what I think, and give you my opinion. But we've all, and hey, listen, okay, I'm going to say this again, Kyle did a great job, Andrew's done a great job, fire department done a great job getting, folks, is our system in bad shape?
Yeah.
Has anybody in here filled a jug up with water and put in their closet?
Yes.
Thank you. We can take steps too. Go out and ask your neighbor if they have water, help them out, don't, yes, the town needs to step up some, but we can do it ourselves as a group, and we've done it, Kyle did it, Andrew's done it, other people have done it. What we have got to do, grab this thing, it's all of our system, we're all in this together, and we've got to go down this road. There is light at the end of the tunnel, but we got to make sure, we got to squeeze every penny, we got to squeeze the brown out of a penny, because we got nothing. We have to do that, and we can.
We will.
I know we will.
Does anybody else need to speak?
Well said.
All right. Next item on the agenda is other business.
I have no other business, Mr. Mayor. Nothing from us. Commissioner Jeffries, other business?
I've said probably more than I should.
I'm glad you said it all.
Well, I'm thinking, I think, still preliminary based on what Hillary was saying, I think, wait until we get a little more information, so we've got more to share with people, I think. Yeah, I think we should wait until we have more information to share with people before we schedule a town hall meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Hopefully we be through a lot of processes and actually tell them some things rather than surmising, I think.
Based on what Tony just said, I think we do need to see a final, I'm sure that's a draft, obviously it's going to get ripped apart, so, I know you mentioned you hadn't got a final.
Yeah, if I could, just explain, the state requires an engineer's wet mark on cost estimates and a proposed project, that's all that is, none of that is written in stone, and it's-
That's good, that's good, thank you.
DEQ requires that as part of the grant process, and irrespective of what the source of funds are, so they're not currently under contract with, for that part- So they're not currently under contract with, for that part of the project. That would be part of the process, is once we get the notice to proceed, we would come in. We had an RFQ process, and by the way, they were the only engineering firm to respond twice. Mike Tolson did not respond. Matt Gay and Associates did not respond. So they would have to be put under contract for the project, and then, of course, we could have the information session.
I've already emailed the Baptist Men Association, let them know that we were losing some pressure, and so they would kind of be on, on call. If you could reach out to the Edwards, let them know also. But if there's no other business or comments, I'd like to go start seeing, right around town, look for any leaks. And I know a lot of us would also, so if there's no other business, we can go start figuring out this current pressure issue. Would you need a motion for adjournment?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion and meeting adjourned.
Yeah, you brought it, sent it too late. Tom?